I now call to order the October 28th, 2025 Board of Trustees Meeting, time being 6:30 PM. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. For the United States of America and in due time for which stands one of our God indivisible of liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Clerk, make it a roll call, please.
Trustee Wiegand? Trustee Cannon?
Here.
Trustee Daly?
Present.
Trustee Moyer? Trustee Teetz?
Here.
Mayor Proton Mason?
Here.
Mayor Shosse?
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you.
Are there any amendments to the agenda this evening?
I would like to move item C1 to section E.
Okay. We'll move it to section E seven. Are there any conflicts with the agenda this evening?
No.
Okay, perfect.
Now is time for public comment. Members of the public wishing to speak will be given three minutes to speak. Sign at the table and state your name at the podium. You'll be given three minutes, and this is for non-agenda items. Okay, no public comment. First thing will be a presentation. This is going to be on the Wellington Main Streets. And the third quarter report, Ms. Garcia will present on this.
Thank you, Mayor and Trustees Patty Garcia, Town Administrator. As the agenda title alludes to, this is the quarterly report on the Wellington Main Street Program. So, the focus areas for the third quarter have included visibility and community engagement, supporting local businesses, and long-term planning. Achievements are numerous. The Main Street Group and the Main Street Coordinator has been working hard over this past quarter. So, achievements include the Main Street Market with participation by approximately fifty different vendors, development of the Shop Local campaign that will include loyalty rewards and incentive programs. These programs will be rolled out closer to the holiday season, and volunteers contributed to over thirteen hundred hours this quarter. Additionally, they've been working on areas related to the Cleveland Avenue Project. They're working on signage and parking plan for construction, the Roll and Stroll Downtown Accessibility Assessment, which is scheduled for November 13th with the Department of Local Affairs. And they've received DOLA funding for the second phase of the 3D renderings that will help people better visualize the project. Impacts during the third quarter include the number of volunteers that have been present, the funds that have been raised, and community engagement. So, what's ahead for Q4 includes the Trick or Treat Down Main Street, which is happening on Friday starting at 3:00 PM, the annual dinner, which will be held on November 20th. That will include information related to the Cleveland Avenue Project, so a presentation by staff, so that people will be aware of what's happening and will have a little more information when that time comes. Recruitment of Board and Committee members, selection and onboarding of a website consultant, finalization and implementation of volunteer engagement program, a draft proposed public art and mural program, advancement of Cleveland Avenue Construction Committee projects, advancement of the Historic Preservation Oral Storytelling Series. That is a lot of words there. Finalization of the Economic Vitality Plan and the Draft 2026 Budget and Work Plan for Board Approval. Hitting the wrong button. There we go. And that is the report for Main Street for the third quarter. And I'm happy to field any questions. If I don't have the answers, then I will certainly take that back to the Main Street liaison and we reply back to the entire board.
Thank you. Any questions from the Board? Trustee Cannon?
Don't have a question, I just want to make a comment. Would please pass on to the Main Street Organization that I'm extremely proud of everything that they're doing.
Absolutely.
They have really upped their game, and they're doing some marvelous things for our downtown.
Yes.
Thank you.
I will absolutely do that. Thank you so much.
Trustee Daly?
The record. The record of the volunteer hours as they continue to press every quarter over quarter is amazing. So, they have a lot of dedicated members spending a lot of hours outside of board meetings and committee meetings, actually, you know, beating the streets and doing the decorations. And you see them up and down Main Street. And I think that's amazing, and I wanted to say thank you for all the volunteer hours that they're seeing. Additionally, they have had some really great ideas with their YFTE for their, one of the programs that I want to bring up later, so I'll talk about that more. But I think it's a very good idea to accelerate and to make habitual shopping downtown and people coming downtown. I think that they're doing really great things and that we have a lot to learn from them. And then above and beyond that, for the annual dinner and leading up to that, they are looking for board members and new committee members. So, if anybody out there is interested in participating in this amazing group that's doing a lot of great work for our Main Streets Program, please reach out to me. I can give you contact information if you want to serve on their Board or become a volunteer and be part of this initiative. It's a really great group to be a part of. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's pretty cool. They used to struggle with getting volunteer hours and people that would show up, and now they're setting records. And so, just really shows how their leadership's going. So, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Mayor Shosse, I do apologize about interrupting. I am getting notices that the Zoom meeting is not active. Do you mind if we pause for just a moment?
By all means. Okay, perfect. Back to business here. Will the clerk please read the title or the items on the consent agenda, please? Titles?
October 14th, 2025 Meeting Minutes. Resolution Number 41-2025 Admitting the Town's Policy Regarding the Colorado Open Records Act and Resolution Number 44-2025 Authorizing the Town Treasurer to Enter into an Agreement for Portable Toilet Services for Municipal Parks and Facilities.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Ms. Clerk, make it a roll call, please.
Trustee Teetz?
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand?
Yes.
Trustee Cannon?
Yes.
Trustee Daly?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Mason?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes.
Mayor, that motion passes.
Thank you. All right, on to action items this evening. Ms. Clerk, will you please read the title for item E1?
Public Hearing on Land Use Code Amendments for Electrical Vehicle Charging Permit Requirements in accordance to House Bill 24-1173.
Thank you. And Mr. Cody Byrd, Planning Director, will present on this item.
Good morning, Mayor, or good morning. It's been a day. Good evening, Mayor and Board. Cody Byrd, Planning Director. I'm going to do a quick high-level overview. I've got a couple of items on the agenda tonight, and I just wanted to clarify for procedure and purpose here. This first item for electric vehicle charging is a public hearing item. It's presented in your packet as two parts. The first part will be action is conducting the public hearing. We'll close that public hearing, and then Board deliberation action will be taken on the following item, which is an ordinance considering land use code amendments for electric vehicle charging. I also want to point out a little bit of a difference. I put the public hearing procedures, our standard procedures, in your packet, and this is a legislative topic as opposed to a quasi-judicial topic. So, in a legislative topic, we're not going to ask for conflicts of interest in ex parte communications like we normally do, because it's a legislative act that affects all townwide and not a specific property interest. So, that's a little bit different than the norm. And since this is the town initiating these changes, there is no applicant. The town is the applicant, so there won't be an applicant rebuttal. And then we'll do the second action with the following item for the actual deliberations. Otherwise, the procedures are fairly normal. I'll give a high-level introduction here. You can ask me any clarifying questions. We'll provide an opportunity for public comments. And following any public comments, we'll close the public hearing. Any questions on procedure this evening? Perfect. So, I am excited to bring these topics back to the Board. This discussion for electric vehicle charging began, we presented information to the Board at the August 12th meeting as kind of a work session topic and presentation on why we're doing this and what those changes were looking like. We did get a nod from both the Planning Commission and the Board of Trustees that that was a good direction. So, we pursued that, and now we're bringing this back to you for consideration and ordinance for making the proposed land use code amendments. We did take this through the Planning Commission process as a public hearing as well. There we go. And so, the draft ordinance in your packet, along with the proposed code amendments, were recommended by the Planning Commission to adopt as presented. That was a unanimous vote. So, I'm not going to go through all the details tonight, but I wanted to highlight some of the high-level substantive items regarding why we're doing this on the proposed amendments. So, as a reminder, this was an element of House Bill 24-1173. The state adopted this, requiring that municipalities in Wellington is, one of those municipalities, had to take one of three actions to incorporate a more streamlined land review process for electric vehicle charging permit review. The direction from the Planning Commission and Board was to pursue the second item here, which was adopt elements of the Model Code that was developed by the State Department, Colorado Energy Office, and then make sure that it fits for Wellington's context. So, that was the direction that we took. There's some other compliance reporting requirements, but the focus tonight's where this box is drawn around, which is making land use code amendments to address application timelines and review requirements. The publication of a checklist and the reporting application results to the state are things that staff will take care of administratively. So, I'll breeze through these, but I do want to, there's a lot more detail in your packet, but I wanted to highlight these were the substantive changes. So, in the application procedures portion of the land use code, we do differentiate EV charging sites primary, which is primary would be the only use on that land is developed for a parking lot specifically for EV charging. That's the primary use of the site. And we differentiate that from accessory EV charging, which is there's already a parking lot, they already have parking, and they want to add the EV component to it. That's supporting the primary use, which could be a retail store, boutique store, some other business use in the parking lots accessory. Really no substantive change to the use of the site to add electric vehicle charging to it. And that's part of the intent of this bill was we should make it easier for these new technologies to get reviewed and approved. So, we feel we've accomplished that. There is a little bit of a nuance that I'll talk about in a minute here. When staff was differentiating accessory versus primary for EV charging, we did feel like at some point, there could be so many accessory EV charging that it does change the land use field and context. It might be subject to a more strenuous review process. And then, in staff evaluating this, talking with other industry experts, we recommend eight or fewer accessory EV charging should still be considered administratively by staff as an accessory use. If there's more than eight, so nine or more on a single site, even if they're accessory, that starts to change the nature of that parking lot and probably needs to go through a more thorough review process. And so, for that instance, we're recommending to go through a site plan review procedure, which is an already established procedure that our Planning Commission is used to seeing. So, that was a little bit of a nuance I wanted to highlight. Another big change, not a big change for staff administratively, but the state required that you notify the applicant within three days of a decision being made. Our code previously said ten for all decisions. We felt, hey, three days, we can accomplish that. It's only fair if what it made the decision, all you have to do is document it, notify. So, we made that change across the board for all application types. And that's something that staff is confident in handling. So, speaking of the primary and accessory uses, we had to decide how are these going to integrate into our existing land use code context. Here you see an excerpt from our land use code. This is the Table of Allowable Uses. Obviously, the table's a lot bigger than this, but we just highlighted the changes here. So, we added EV charging primary and EV charging accessory. The primary uses were recommended in C1, C3, light industrial and industrial as permitted uses. Other zone districts are residential in nature, or the C2 downtown core is a, doesn't have the land use for highest and best use to just make a parking lots exclusively for EV. So, we didn't feel that was appropriate. You might ask, the Planning Commission asked, why isn't EV charging primary allowed as a use by right in the primary? I'm sorry, the P, the public zone district? Parking lots were already covered in that zone district isn't allowed use, so there was no need to duplicate. Otherwise, we're recommending accessory EV charging sites in all zone districts. Our existing code framework identifies use specific standards for all of our uses listed. I won't highlight everything on this slide, but what I wanted to highlight is basically, we had an existing code framework that had standards for parking lots, for parking lot landscaping, parking lot lighting. And in staff's opinion, we're really not changing the context from a parking lot. So, most of those standards are already in place. We just needed to cross-reference to make sure that where we've added new land uses for primary EV and accessory EV, that those use standards that are already in place apply appropriately throughout. So, that's what we updated throughout the code, was making sure that everything cross-referenced for these new land use categories. And for the development standards, same thing. This is an existing code framework that's already there. We integrated EV charging into these existing categories. The two things I wanted to highlight on this slide, the EV charging spaces still count as a parking space. You can park a vehicle there regardless of whether it's EV or not EV. The town's code is not designed to enforce if someone parks a non-EV vehicle in an EV parking space. Town staff is not going out to enforce that. That's private parking lot. They want to do that, they can do that. But there is another state law that says if you have an accessible, an ADA parking space designed to meet accessibility, but it's not exclusively for accessibility. So, this would be you've exceeded the number of ADA parking spaces, and you haven't marked them all with the accessible sign, then that parking space can count as either an EV or an ADA. You don't have to separate it. It counts as both. I know that's complicated. It's a state law. We researched the heck out of it. The wording is tough, but we're in compliance with it. And last piece was a concern brought up at a Planning Commission hearing that we didn't want to have, or the concern was raised, do we really want to have EV charging sites at residences? And if it's for residential personal use, not a problem. The concern was we don't want to have additional vehicle trips to residences for the purpose of charging for commercial purposes. So, we've added as home occupations a prohibition, you can't have an EV charging site as a home occupation. We've added a whole bunch of definitions, nothing really to highlight here, but I'm happy to answer any questions on those. The definitions we've used are aligned with the recommendations from the state Energy Office. And that concludes my presentation. I know that was quick, so I'm happy to answer any questions. Again, this is your public hearing, and then after this, we'll go back and do deliberations and action on ordinance number 12-2025.
Thank you, sir. Are there any clarifying questions from the Board on this item? No. Okay. I'll open the public hearing for this item. Are there any comments from the public on this? No. I'll now close the public hearing for this item. Do you have any closing comments?
I do not. I was happy to answer any questions, but seeing none.
Perfect.
That's all you need to do for this item.
Okay. Ms. Clerk, will you please read the title for item E2?
Ordinance Number 12-2025 Adopting Amendments to Chapter 15 of the Municipal Code to Address Electric Vehicle EV Charging Permit Review Requirements in accordance with House Bill 24-1173.
Thank you. And once again, Mr. Byrd will present on this item.
Thank you, Mayor. Not much to present here. This is the official action on ordinance number 12-2025. This would include your deliberations, if any. And then staff is here to help answer questions or help you with your motion if you.
Any clarifying questions from the Board at this point in the process?
I don't have clarifying questions, just to comment. I'm very grateful for receiving this information in August and being able to review it, filter public questions, comments, any suggestions. I do like when we receive things like this over an extended period of time, because then it allows for that additional public feedback. I received two questions in it, but it's still two questions that could have created issues later had they had not thought to answer the question and have the correct answer provided. So, I'm very grateful that you brought this as soon as you did.
Thank you.
Thank you for that feedback.
Trustee Wiegand?
I just appreciate the very thorough disclosure and everything that you had on here. I mean, I think you caught everything, every item that could have possibly came up. So, really appreciate the thoroughness. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee.
All right. Do I hear a motion?
I move to adopt ordinance number 12-2025 Approving Amendments to Chapter 15 of the Municipal Code to Address Electric Vehicle EV Charging Permit Review requirements in accordance with House Bill 24-1173.
I second.
You, Ms. Clerk, make it a roll call, please.
Trustee Teetz?
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand?
Yes.
Trustee Cannon?
Yes.
Trustee Daly?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Mason?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes.
Mayor, that motion passes.
Thank you. Ms. Clerk, will you please read the title for item E3?
Public Hearing on Land Use Code Amendments for Prohibition of Certain Landscaping Practices in accordance with Senate Bill 24-005 and House Bill 25-1113.
Thank you. Mr. Cody Byrd, Planning Director, will present on this item.
Thank you, Mayor. While the slides are being pulled up here, just same overview process. I don't need to repeat it all unless there's any questions. Two-parter. This one's also legislative, so the normal quasi-judicial procedures don't need to be followed in this particular instance. And also, in a similar vein, we brought this from before the Board. August 12th is kind of a presentation on why we were reviewing these proposed changes. This particular public hearing is regarding a state requirement on prohibiting non-functional turf, non-functional artificial turf, and invasive plant species. This is regarding Senate Bill 24-005 and House Bill 25-1113. Both of these bills were passed in close proximity to each other, and they're really similar. In fact, HB 25-1113 clarifies some of the things that were presented in the former Senate Bill and then added a few other wrinkles to it for staff to work our way through. So, the highlights of these two bills, and staff did consider both of them concurrently. This is what we presented previously with a little bit of a nuance here. Senate Bill 24-005 created the need to prohibit the installation of non-functional turf, non-functional artificial turf, and invasive plant species for all new development of industrial, commercial, civic, and right-of-way as well as HOA common areas. So, that was pretty clear. That has to be done by the end of this year, and that's why we're bringing it to you now. The second bill, HB 25-1113, clarified some good cleanup things on that original bill, but it also added two new other components. It said that this is also applicable to new residential projects or multifamily residential projects with twelve or more units. That compliance deadline was a little bit longer, but in staff's evaluation of this, it's really, it's a process that's largely already in place in our code framework. It doesn't change things dramatically. We don't have any pending multifamily projects that were going to be impacted. So, it made sense to go ahead and incorporate that in this same first effort, since it's the same prohibition language, just a different applicable project type. So, we did incorporate that component in this first round of prohibitions per the direction of the Planning Commission and the Board. And the other wrinkle that I'll talk about in just a minute here a little further, the second, the House Bill also included that we have to adopt rules and regulations around installation of turf and irrigation of all real residential property. That has a compliance deadline of end of 2027. I'll talk about this on the next slide. Here we go. So, this is a timeline that I've covered the first topic. The middle bubble here, the town staff is going to be working on other legislative requirements to update our comprehensive plan with the water supply element. That's required by end of 2026. The recommendations of that effort are going to have some impact on turf and irrigation standards for properties. So, we needed to make sure that that was baked into the overall process. And we also need to update our landscape irrigation design manual that has a lot of this guidance in there, but needs to be updated, and that all those efforts are going to work together along with the town's water supply planning. So, we really wanted to make sure that we were doing those in the right order. So, we are recommending bringing that component back at the end of '26 and '27 to meet that compliance deadline. So, that was a little bit different on this Senate bill. The changes for the code are going to be really, really brief. In large part, we're just adding this prohibition. The way our code structure was originally constructed, we have each kind of applicable property type and what was required for that. So, we went through the code, and we added this prohibition in each of those sections. We did include language that it preserves the ability for existing properties to maintain existing. They can't, if it's a redevelopment of 50% or more, they would need to comply with this prohibition. But if they're just maintaining existing, that is specifically preserved in the Act and in the code amendments. We updated the prohibition on invasive plant species. That was already in our code, but we clarified it by referencing more current standards by reaching out to our local state agencies and county extension for the most current list. So, we've added new definitions to align with the code and some other little cleanups. The definitions are listed here. They're in your packet, but most of them speak for themselves, I think. But I'm happy to answer any questions on clarifying differences between turf and non-functional turf. As long as it's functional, it's still okay to install bluegrass and all the other things. Functional being the operative word there. And again, I'll answer any questions, but staff's recommendation is approval for this. The Planning Commission recommended approval as presented. Otherwise, I'm happy to stand for any questions.
Thank you. Any clarifying questions from the Board on this? No. I'll now open the public hearing. Any members of the public wishing to speak on this item? No. I'll now close the public hearing for this item. And then, Ms. Clerk, will you please read the title for item E4?
Ordinance Number 13-2025 Adopting Amendments to Chapter 15 of the Municipal Code to Prohibit Certain Landscaping Practices in accordance with Senate Bill 24-005 and House Bill 25-1113.
Thank you. And Mr. Byrd will present on it.
Thank you, Mayor. Not much of a presentation, but this is your opportunity to deliberate, and I can answer any questions before you take action on this ordinance.
Thank you. Anything from the Board on this? Trustee or Mayor Proton?
Just a real quick comment here. Just to piggyback off what Trustee Teetz mentioned earlier, I really appreciate you getting this to us early. I know I spent probably about an hour and a half trying to explain the difference between functional and non-functional turf to somebody just the other week. So, I really appreciate you getting this to us, and thank you.
Thank you, sir. Oh, Trustee Wiegand?
Good question. This will make it where we will have one more permit that they're going to have to get during a construction time for the landscape? Is that right?
It won't be a separate permit. So, this applies to any new commercial, industrial, civic-type projects. Those standards are already reviewed at the time of site plan review. So, it's already baked into an existing review process. There wouldn't be any additional permit requirement.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, sir. Do I hear a motion on this item?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance Number 13-2025 Adopting Amendments to Chapter 15 of the Municipal Code to Prohibit Certain Landscaping Practices in accordance with Senate Bill 24-005 and House Bill 25-1113.
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Clerk, make it a roll call, please.
Trustee Daly?
Yes.
Trustee Teetz?
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand?
Yes.
Trustee Cannon?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Mason?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes.
Mayor, that motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
Ms. Clerk, will you please read the title for item E5?
Resolution Number 42-2025 A Resolution Approving Interim Town Attorney Services.
Perfect. So, we have Jed here, and we have Matt Gould here. These are the gentlemen that we're proposing to have as our interim attorneys before we can put off for, you know, an RFP next year when that point comes. So, do you guys want to get up and introduce yourselves to the Board? Perfect.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Matthew Gould. Excuse me. I work with the law firm. I'm employed and a shareholder in the law firm of Bell Gould, Linder &amp; Scott. Our firm represents a number of municipalities in Northern Colorado. There are a few that we've represented over time and don't represent it this time. Jed is the town attorney for the town of Alt. And we kind of all cooperate to work for the town of Milliken, and then I work for the town of Nun and the town of Grover. So, we have a very diverse array. So we have a very diverse array, uh, array of clients that we work for, uh, all statutory towns. Um, I want to compliment the work that your planner did because that was just a great presentation, great job. You know, I, I approached this thinking, are there some, are there some accomplishments we could highlight of some examples of things that we've done? Obviously, we are involved in day-to-day work, drafting resolutions, drafting ordinances, trying to stay up, up to date on all the legislation that this legislature is putting on us, which is pretty substantial. Um, but it seems like some of the, the noteworthy things that jump to my mind are litigation-related because we have represented our towns in litigation over time. Uh, we have, we achieved summary judgment against a developer who sought to prematurely assert monetary recovery rights under a sewer line contribution agreement. We also prevailed on appeal of that same summary judgment. Uh, we obtained a cash settlement from a developer who, who sought declaratory judgment seeking to evade obligations under a development agreement based on statute of limitations. That didn't go to trial, uh, but, but we did achieve a settlement there. Uh, so we've had a variety of different types of litigation achievements in regard to municipal work. We don't always represent our towns. When there's litigation involved, we certainly will refer things out to SIRS. Um, and then, of course, we assist in uh lots of election-related matters, uh, numerous ballot measures, everything from marijuana issues, tax and taper matters, um disposition of municipal property. Uh, and, and just a, uh, we've, we've done a wide variety of work over time. I know our, our firm has been representing municipalities. We represented Severance for quite a long time. We've been with Nun for about fifteen years. Bertha, we represented uh for a while. We've been working for Milliken now for about six years, so we're happy to take any questions and we're excited about the opportunity to work with, with you all uh and what we can learn and what we can contribute.
Awesome. Appreciate it.
Sure. Good evening, members of the board. Really a pleasure to be here. Uh, I'll just echo what Matt had to say. Um, my name is Jed Scott. I've been a partner with the firm for, well, twenty years. I've been doing municipal work for about twenty of those years. I've worn a bunch of different hats. I started out as an assistant attorney, uh, and a prosecutor. I'm now a town attorney. Uh, I've assisted a number of towns with special projects and it's probably easier. Matt, I think, did a pretty good job covering the breadth. But a, any day you pick up the newspaper, it's, it's just something new and that's what life is like being a municipal attorney. So uh, it's really an honor to get to talk to you guys. I wanted to also say that Wellington's sort of near and dear to me. I live five minutes from here. I've lived off of Alcannon Road for about fifteen years. So my family and I sort of treat and consider Wellington our home, even though we both, my wife and I both work down in town. So uh, we use your resources. Our kids play in your Little League. You've done a terrific job with Parks and Rec. I haven't heard them mention yet. Uh, and this is a wonderful, growing, booming town, so it's exciting to see what you all are dealing with. It's a real honor and privilege to get to work here. I'd like to get to know each one of you individually and I'm happy to answer any specific questions you may have.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, are there any comments from the public on this item? No. Okay, I'm going to bring it to the board. Any questions, comments from the board? Trustee Cannon?
Yes, um, one of the things that our board is considering in twenty twenty-six is moving to Home Rule. Do you have experience with Home Rule communities?
I will say that our firm does. Uh, Greg Bell assisted when the town of Severance transitioned to Home Rule and uh it, it's not, a- as I understand it, uh, y- you form a, a committee or, you know, charter um, uh, group that takes the lead on that. So the town attorney isn't necessarily uh, uh, arms elbow deep in that, but the answer is I have not and I don't believe that Jed has, but our firm has and Greg, uh, he claims to be retired, but he shows up pretty frequently, uh, at least weekly, so we do look to Greg for input on issues that come up that we're not familiar with. You bet.
Trustee Wigan?
That was the question I wanted to ask too, and I know uh, Mr. Bell is retired, but like you say, he's seemed like he's still fairly active.
It, it does. He shows up regularly. He's gone next week, I think, but I've seen him this week.
All right. And I know your uh law firm has been around Fort Collins for a long, long time, so. Right, I know I was. Yeah, I know I was in the insurance business and thirty-two years and I know you guys were before that even, so.
Great, great. Uh, Jed has actually been with the firm longer than I have, even though I may have a bigger bald spot.
I was going to mention that.
Yeah, right. I, uh, I joined the firm in uh two thousand and six. Uh, join, I, I went to work as an associate, so I've been with the firm that long and I had actually practiced law years before that, but there was this gap, so.
Thank you.
Trustee Teets?
You both answered the question that I had related to Home Rule. Um, I love the fact that you answered it honestly and noted that the involvement would be through that charter committee and it's kind of their decision on that attorney that they pick, whether they choose to utilize town attorney or they request an attorney that represents them, so I think that was a, a, a good answer for us when we look at the Home Rule kind of stuff, so. I welcome you. You it's, it's hard to say goodbye to an attorney that has been involved in the town of Wellington for as many years as he has been, but I am excited to see what you guys can bring related to smaller municipalities as well, since you've been involved with so many of them.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, do I hear a motion?
I move to approve resolution number forty-two dash twenty twenty-five, a resolution approving interim town attorney services.
I second.
Thank you. Ms. Clerk, make it a roll call, please.
Trustee Cannon?
Yes.
Trustee Daly?
Yes.
Trustee Teets?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Mason?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes.
Mayor, that motion passes?
Thank you very much.
All right, uh, Ms. Clerk, will you please read the title for item E six?
Resolution number forty-three dash twenty twenty-five, a resolution appointing a liaison to the Wellington Housing Authority.
Thank you, and Ms. Garcia will present on this item.
Thank you, Mayor and trustees, Patty Garcia, Town Administrator. After the April twenty twenty-four election, appointments of board members were made to various boards and commissions and through the process, trustee Lowry Moyer was appointed to the Wellington Housing Authority. Due to work schedules and issues with home and things like that, trustee Moyer has not been able to attend those meetings. Um, she has requested to be replaced on the Wellington Housing Authority Board. Trustee Daly has offered to fill that position. This position is a voting liaison, so not just someone who sits through the meeting and provides information, but actually is a voting liaison to the Wellington Housing Authority. As noted in the memo, um, this is so the board, the position is to assure the alignment with the town's housing goals and community development priorities, and I stand for any questions.
Any questions from the board on this item?
No questions? Do you want comments now or?
Yeah, sure.
Or later?
I mean, we'll do it, we'll do it after the motion.
Okay, I'll wait.
Perfect. Are there any comments from the public on this item? No. Okay, do I hear a motion on this item?
I'll move to approve resolution number forty-three dash twenty twenty-five, a resolution adopting a liaison to the Wellington Housing Authority.
I second.
Thank you. And then final comments, um, or direction from the board on this item?
Um, I think it's great that trustee Daly is being appointed to this position. Um, I sat down and tried to think about it and a lot of our boards where we're getting ready to appoint or reappoint people, I think it's extremely important that we're appointing people that were just elected considering the possibility that there are four of us that will not be running for reelection and that it continues that continuity of care with these boards, so we're not bouncing people back and forth and so I think it's a great idea that some of these boards are getting placed with some of these newer members. Unfortunately, trustee Moyer is such an asset because of her experience with housing in general, um, but I like to see that we're appointing people that are going to be here past April next year.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Clerk, may I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Trustee Cannon?
Yes.
Trustee Daly?
Yes.
Trustee Teets?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Mason?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes.
Mayor, that motion passes?
Thank you. And on to the amended portion of the agenda. Ms. Clerk, can you read the title for item E seven?
Yes, sir. Town of Wellington fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget development process update.
Thank you very much. And then Ms. Garcia, the Town Administrator, and then Mr. Nick Redavid, the Fin- Finance Director and Town Treasurer, will present on this item.
Thank you, Mary. Uh, Mayor, Mayor and trustees, um, thank you for your time tonight and look, taking another look at the draft twenty twenty-six budget. There was several, God bless you. Um, there were several items that staff is looking for direction on which Nick Redavid, Finance Director, will be walking you through. I'm really proud of the work that's been done on this budget. Um, staff has worked hard to bring to you the best budget that they could find, um, acknowledging what our revenues were and um trying to meet that with the expenditures that we are proposing. Um, I'll turn this over to Mr. Redavid and um potentially Mr. Trustee Cannon can um talk to us a little bit about um the goal for tonight, since it was moved off of a presentation. Thank you.
Uh, good evening, Mayor and trustees. As requested, at the October fourteenth regular meeting of the board, as Ms. Garcia shared, we are bringing back several topics tonight for discussion and to request specific board direction. In the past two weeks, staff has continued to refine budget requests and revenue projections, which will be shared with the board at a special meeting on November eighteenth. The notice of budget was published in the Coloradoan electronically and in print on October nineteenth, stating that, stating the date and time of the meeting and notifying residents that a proposed budget is available for review. The draft of this budget is available at the Municipal Services Building as well as on the town's website in the October fourteenth meeting packet. Additionally, the budget bonanza took place last week with department leadership and over forty engaged residents in attendance. And the Finance Advisory Board, including Board Liaison trustee Cannon, met last night to review the budget in its entirety. The first topic staffic, staff requests acknowledgement and support from the board is the proposed four hundred and ninety-two thousand dollar reduction in general fund operating expenditure requests as well as additional reductions in the water fund, sewer fund and park fund. These reductions are made possible by a hiring freeze for two vacant public works administration positions, not, not adding additional officers to our contract with Larimer County Sheriff's Office, a hiring freeze of a parks technician two position and reductions in expected expenses for the NPIC payment due to an interest rate reduction as well as operating expenses at the new water reclamation facility. Staff is committed to tracking revenue trends throughout twenty twenty-six and will review the hiring frees mid-year. Additionally, upon Pooter School District's budget adoption, staff will review options to share the cost of an additional SRO or school resource officer, excuse me. Does the board support staff identified and proposed follow-up actions?
Okay.
I'm sorry. You lost the dis movement there. So are you still on this, this one slide here too now?
Yes.
Are you asking for a decision at this point?
On, on these particular topics.
No, I don't have any questions. I do have a couple of comments.
Yes, sir.
First of all, again, staff, thank you so much for everything you've got to do. I know that, that budget is difficult and uh seems like the past several years we've had shortfalls. And the problem isn't necessarily that a problem is we don't generate enough revenues to keep up with.
Uh, to keep up with the service demands to our community here. Um, I do want to point out a couple of things. The LSO, LCSO contract is adding a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars a year from now on to our general fund obligations. Uh, when we fill those vacancies in public works, when we hire new parks technician, that again keeps adding more expenditures to our, our, our general fund. We're not bringing in the revenues to support those. And that's my concern, that we need to find a way to fix this and systemically, not just put Band-Aids over problems and, and delay projects and, and put off hiring people and put off uh you know, rebuilding batting cages or whatever, wherever those, those immediate needs are at the time. We need to fundamentally think about how we're generating revenues. Now, I'll talk more about that later when we're in our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anything else? No?
I do. I'm sorry. Um, so I just want to clarify. So you're asking bullet point by bullet point if we support removal or keeping? Is that the questions at this time or are you just asking if we have any questions on this?
Uh, I am asking, as we progress through the slideshow, um, so I'm asking for specific feedback on
The bullet points. So yes or no's? Okay, so then I'm going to say as far as keeping or removing the batting cages, I would like to
We're not on that.
Oh, we're not on that portion.
This, this particular slide.
This slide. Okay. Trustee Cannon?
I do have one more point. You know, this, this kind of is like how we had our budget presented to us without an understanding where the revenues are coming from. We had work sessions uh, starting in August and then in September, but we didn't know what the revenues could support and we were making straw poll up and down and, and you guys were throwing at the budget and all of a sudden we can't afford it. I'm not in favor of a straw poll on every specific bullet point until we go through the whole thing. That way we can understand where our, where our finances lie, because we can, we can say, oh, we need an, a, a, a school resource officer and we need to, you know, add two public works employees and we'll check again in the middle of the year. Again, we're not bringing in the revenues to support any of that. So without, without understanding the big picture, I don't think it's a, it's very wise for us to go ahead and, and say this bullet point, yes, this bullet point, no. We need to think about this more comprehensively. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Well, you well, I suppose just to be clear, we have seen revenues in the budget, right? That was our last work session, but regardless of that, uh, absolutely, staff, I really appreciate you guys getting all this put together for us as far as all of these cuts. Uh, you know, financial times are hard right now. We got to keep our belt buckle tight and uh, I think these are all, I think these are all excellent and I appreciate staff uh digging into the barrel and pulling out what they can to uh get this budget balanced, so appreciate it.
Thank you. I'll say that I support the staff identified um updates, so thank you for that. Trustee Wigan?
I appreciate the staff going through all the hard work, uh, cutting and knowing we have to do some hard decisions and freezing of hiring and appreciate you did that and uh, again, we got to look at the total overall numbers and that's what it takes, that's what it takes. So we got to make some hard decisions and appreciate what you've done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I want to acknowledge that uh, this is a ton of money that has been found or created within the budget. Um, and I want to acknowledge that there's a lot of sacrifice that goes along with these line items as well. Um, things like needed staffing, um, and acknowledge, acknowledging that we would make the sacrifice to wait till mid-year to determine whether or not we can afford those people well knowing that those are necessary positions to fill. Um, I have to acknowledge that, um, although we're seeing these as as recommendations or potentials from a staff perspective, I do also want to acknowledge the sacrifice from the staff perspective to make these cuts happen. So thank you for that and, and based on these recommendations, I, I also would agree with putting these into the budget for, for um consideration when we make this decision. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, the next topic requested by members of the board was additional information on the batting cages expenditure in the park fund. Department leadership for Parks and Recreation compiled average annual usage, revenue, maintenance costs and seasonal wages for twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-five as well as indirect expenses for full-time staff and electricity this year and a five-year outlay for capital expenses at the batting cages. Additionally, department leadership has provided an update on the Parks Recreation Open Space and Trails Master Plan and Community Center feasibility study. Uh, and so we are requesting uh board support for, excuse me, board ga- guidance for keeping or removing the eleven thousand dollar batting cage the $11,000 batting cage maintenance and operations expenditure in the park fund.
Thank you. Any direction from this? Trustee Teets?
I would like to keep the batting cages. We do not have a lot of options for our youth in this area and I know that it's not just a youth thing. I know that I've done date nights at batting cages, so it's an adult feature as well. People go and practice their swings before softball games. It is a very good item to have still available in our community. I mean, we ask regularly for our town to give up a lot. And it's not just town staff, it's our residents. They give up and sacrifice. And so this is one thing that I would genuinely ask that we figure out a way to keep this 11,000 in the budget to be able to keep those batting cages open for the next season.
Thank you. Trustee Cannon?
Two weeks ago, Administrator Garcia talked about where our budget numbers were running and they were about $300 in the deficit. $300,000 in the deficit there. I did some evaluation of, of our finances, what our reserves are expected to be with this budget, draft budget as presented. $300,000 is one half of 1% of our reserves. So $300,000 freeing that up and, and anyone who understands budget theory from a municipal standpoint knows that, that it's not just your taxes coming in and expenses going out. You know, the revenues that come in also can include reserves that we set reserves aside for, for emergencies or fixing, fixing issues and so forth. I agree that the batting cages are a great addition to our the town here. They, they lose about $8,000 a year, but you know, that's, that's just it. I would say if we're going to pay for it, and looking for ways to pay for it, that we consider dipping in the reserve for that $300,000. And that way we can cover the batting cages and do that without sacrificing other services.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Proten?
I would, I would agree that we need to keep the 11,000 for batting cages in, in the budget.
Thank you. Trustee Wigan?
I agree. I think that's an important part of the community, so we need to keep her.
Trustee Daly?
I want to start first with the feedback provided. I brought up this topic during a post-meeting, Parks Recreation Open Space and Trails, to get their opinion on it. The, the overall summary is they are not willing or able right now to provide a specific recommendation based on the fact that they would want to seek feedback from the community prior to making a recommendation. With that said, I will give some details of that, of the conversation that ensued. The major thing I want to notate is that the 11,000 is a line item in the budget. But if you'll notice on the page two, there's significant indirect costs associated with the batting cages, as well as the maintenance expected within the next five years, making that not just 11,000, if we're thinking about a five-year outlook, not 11,000 times five, but 11,000 plus 24,000 times five plus CIP needs of 139,000 as well. So we are talking a lot more than $11,000 when we're looking at the outlook this in the future. Prost Board did look at these numbers and considerations and also looked at and analyzed how many actual people participate on a, a yearly basis within the batting cages. So it's pretty low. So they had a very lively conversation about the financial feasibility, other alternate projects that they suspect and are, are waiting to ramp up their support around our recommendations based off of the master plan and community center feasibility. So what likely they intend to do is based off the results of the Prost Master Plan, provide alternates or a, a larger outlook on what to do overall with everything, but especially in regards to what to do with the batting cages. So that was kind of the overall conversation. There were definitely feelings one way or another. The feeling of keeping them was mostly nostalgic for that reason and for things that it was a, portions of it were a donation to the town. So there were definitely good feelings of nostalgia and why we should keep them. And then there are the other feelings of financially feasibility and actual usership that were definitely not in favor of keeping the batting cages. So there were a lot of feelings both ways, but their formal recommendation will be reserved till after the, the Prost Master Plan is complete and they will provide a formal recommendation at that time. They recommended keeping it, well, not doing any action and keeping it as is in the, in the budget for now. So that's from Prost for a summary of that. From my personal perspective, I know that there have been people who come into our meetings repeatedly in groups of twenty at times begging for pickleball facilities in our town. So when we're talking about current facilities that aren't necessarily being used and are seeing huge costs in the future, I recommend that when we have the, the master plan come back and say what our community is begging for and asking for, that we take that very seriously and we pursue those options. And if anything, we say thank you to the gifts that we have received in our town and say thank you very much. But we also know that we need to acknowledge the greater need of our community and, and as many people as we can touch as possible. So I think that might be the recommendation I have. But as of now, I stand with Prost and I would say no changes recommended for this budget item.
Thank you.
Just a clarifying question, Trustee Daly, do, we are not just, I don't have the timeline in front of me here. We're not going to have the master plan back until after budget adoption. Is that?
Correct. Yeah, it'll be into next year. Yep. Yeah, absolutely. So.
Yeah, so it could be amended or whatever down the road.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, consider that for CIP projects.
I'm for keeping it. I think you heard how much I love baseball last meeting. Okay.
Thank you. This next slide does have three areas that I will stop and, and ask for direction on. So for board consideration is discretionary funds, discretionary funds in the Legislative, also known as the Board of Trustees Department of the General Fund. Currently included in the budget is $25,000 for community grants in the Board Discretionary Fund, $25,000 in funding for the hardship utility grant, and the new $25,000 grant for Cleveland Avenue Business Support. One item to note is that the Board adopted Resolution Number forty-seven dash 2024 in September of last year, creating the Town of Wellington Community Grant. The use of these funds is limited to supporting community events, programs, and projects that provide a direct public benefit to Wellington residents. So in addition for, to asking for board direction on keeping or changing the expenditure, staff is also asking for a direction in renaming this expenditure to the Community Grant Fund. I'll pause here for discussion on this request before moving to the hug program.
Thank you. Trustee Teets?
I think I'm fine keeping it as the Board Discretionary Fund, just in case we don't have funds to say Community Grant Fund in the future, but we still want to have discretionary money to say we want to support the Senior Center for Transportation. I think leaving it as Board Discretionary Funds makes it where it's not misconstrued or confusing to someone who might be looking at the budget line item.
Thank you.
Do you want that as well as the, just the?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, so related to the budget for the Board Discretionary Fund, I still feel this should be about 15,000 instead of the 25,000.
Okay. Hardship Utility Grant.
We'll move.
Sorry, getting out of myself.
Thank you.
Trustee Cannon?
I've always struggled with a, a Board Discretionary Fund in, in the four communities that I've worked in. You know, it's a, it's a good thing to have the availability to help out people or help out nonprofits that, that are doing something to benefit the town. You know, for example. So I'm, I'm always in favor if we can make that work again financially. And like I said in the last point, you know, if we dip into the reserve by that 300,000, we can make all three of these work, all four of them work for that matter. But in a tight budget, which we have been dealing with for, for years, it, it makes me wonder whether or not we need to have a $25,000 discretionary fund for any Eagle Scout candidate or nonprofit that wants to put in a community garden, you know? I'm just not sure it's fiscal responsibility on our part to take taxpayers' dollars and give that away. That's my only comment.
Thank you, sir. Member Ten?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I certainly understand Trustee Cannon's comment there about being fiscally responsible, but I do want to point out that in addition to Trustee Teet's comment about the senior sending funding, which we've had to do for the last number of years, there's a number of entities in town that we also fund, such as the Community Services Center as far as their ADA accessible bathroom goats, the Boys and Girls Club, as far as keeping those services somewhat sustained. What I would not want to see is potential loss of services for those folks. And I'm, I'm, I'm sure there's potential for them to come up with money from, from other donors, but I also know that there's many municipalities in Northern Colorado that do have, that do have these programs. And so I would like to see our discretionary fund continue in that regard. I think there's a number of very important entities that we do fund and I think those funds should remain. As far as what that number amount should be, I, I think I would agree with Trustee Teet's here, which would, would be to take that down to 15,000. We have increased the hardship utility grant over the years to boost that one up. So I think, you know, if we're going to boost up the hug grant, I think that the discretionary fund needs to be maybe taken down a notch for now. And if, if we can get rates back into a better position in maybe 2027, something like that, maybe we can reduce the hug grant and pump back up the discretionary fund. But for now, I, I would keep it at 15,000 as far as the discretionary fund.
Okay. One, one clarifying question for, I guess, both of you. GL code discretionary fund or community grant fund? Cause I heard you, I heard you guys just refer to it as discretionary, so I, I don't want to assume though.
For, for my intent, it would be to keep it as a discretionary fund. Again, the reason for that is the, the senior center has come back to us for the last number of years, asking us for money. We don't, we don't require them to fill out a grant application for that. So I would keep it as a discretionary fund in, but I, I would be inclined to do whatever the Board wants to do here. If we want, if we want to make this senior center apply as a grant in the future, we can, we can certainly do that. I, I don't think it would take much on their behalf, so.
And then Trustee Cannon?
I don't care what it's called.
Thank you. Trustee Wigan?
I agree with Trustee Teets and Mayor Proten. Definitely keep it as a discretionary fund. I think the flexibility is going to be better that way and also to the 15,000. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Daly?
I'm becoming increasingly frustrated with our community grant in general. And I'm, I'm really disappointed in the Board in the way that we bring nonprofits before us and then we, we subject them to conversations that are not encouraging. I think a lot of the time for folks who have meet, met all of our criteria and have the intentions on maximizing our strategic plans through their initiatives. Based on that, I don't know if I could support a community grant program going forward, if that's the way in which we'll operate. And, and providing funds, every single candidate who's come forward for the grant has been kind of put in a very awkward and difficult position. And I don't like standing amongst the board that criticizes nonprofits for that purpose, even though they are standing behind our strategic plans. So what I might recommend instead is that as a board, we designate this amount if it's intended for a community grant, that knowing this next year that we have the most need with revitalizing our downtown, that we acknowledge that is a, a huge need for our strategic plan. And we add the money that we currently have in a community grant fund or discretionary fund towards that initiative. And that we have all those funds used for that purpose for this next calendar year within our budget. That would be my recommendation. I'm not, I'm not in support of our current community grant program as stands, so I don't think I would recommend definitely putting a line item for that purpose or probably proceeding with our current grant process. So that would be my recommendation. There's other programs also and opportunities that are also right now, including the Veterans Memorial or Veterans Gardens at at Community Park that's in need of, of support as well. If that was something that we were looking at internally that we know we have a need for and that's been pursued for a long time within the actual town and our initiatives. So those would be two projects I think that we should designate money towards if we are going to do for the purpose of a grant purpose, but I don't want to subject nonprofits to our grant program going forward personally.
Thank you. As it sits, I am in favor of reducing it or moving it completely off the board. I wouldn't be opposed to making it 15,000, lowering it. We haven't even hit that number, right? So why not just budget a little more conservatively and leave it? Or to Trustee Daly's note, when people come up here and then we kind of subject them to our own opinions when they meet all the grant standards and they've already made it to the podium, that is, it doesn't, doesn't look good. Optically, it doesn't look good for our relationships with those individuals, those organizations all the time, right? So, I mean, I could go either way, where we move it completely somewhere else or we leave, we put it at 15,000 and I don't, I don't care about the name. So guess, Trustee Cannon?
I could live with reducing it to fif- to 15,000. And then that frees up 10,000 that could be used for things like the Cleveland Avenue Business Support or the hug grants, which we know we're going to be getting a lot of applications for.
Okay. So I think general direction is we're okay with it being 15,000. Yes. And then potentially using those other funds somewhere else, yes, Trustee Daly.
And keeping it the name of discretionary fund. Perfect. I think that's the summary I've seen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And real quick.
Yeah.
And also too, if it's in the discretionary fund, if we do want to move that over to the Cleveland people, we can do that at that point too, correct?
I just have to apply for a grant. As it sits.
I, I'd like to talk about it in the introductions.
Okay. Okay.
I like the name Cleveland people.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Does the Board wish to keep or change hardship utility grant expenditure in next year's budget?
All in favor of keeping it? Aye. And then you had more further comment?
I do. Yes. So, and this was my, kind of my want or suggest from removing that 10,000 out of Board Discretionary Fund is I know that in 2024, we had 40K, so 39,765, budgeted 31,500, year to date, 17,100. So it's, you've only utilized 17,000. Is that because of the fact that we put those higher restrictions on people being able to get help? They have to qualify under a certain umbrella now, correct?
It is the same qualifications that were when it was originally established.
Okay, so those haven't changed? You don't have to provide the, the proof, because they've changed from when we had origi- okay, that's what I thought. They have changed.
So they, they went back to what was originally.
Okay, so now anybody can apply.
And it was originally approved. They had to provide proof and it was a $300 maximum. Last year it was temporarily changed. That resolution said through the end of last year. So it did revert back to its original qualifications.
Okay, so the, it still meets that up to $300 for no additional requirements, just you can get the $300.
You do have to provide proof of hardship.
Right, got it. So an example of proof of hardship would be?
I lost my job.
Yeah.
Unable to, okay, medical bills. Got it.
Yes.
So, and that's where the, my suggestion would be is it says we've only utilized 17,100, so I wouldn't think that unless we're going to see a massive uptick in the next month and a half, I would say then for 2026, I know we're getting ready to increase water rates possibly again in April. So I genuinely would just don't interrupt. It's rude and inconsiderate. Moving on. That 10,000 might be beneficial to go ahead and hop into that hug grant funding for possibility of when we do see that increase in 2026, I think we'll have a lot more applications for that possibly. That's my suggestion.
Okay. I want to make one thing very clear. This board has not discussed anything about the water rates or increasing the water rates as of yet. That's a discussion that will be coming to us later on, so I don't want any misinformation being spread just for clarifying facts there. Thank you, trustee Teetz. Trustee Cannon, do you have something you wanted to say? Or you were good?
You know, I, the hardship utility grants have helped out a lot of people, you know. We don't have enough to give everybody the help that they need. But we're working on that with our water source development, with our renegotiations, with North Pudarigas and so forth, hopefully that we can see some kind of relief. To me, if we take the ten thousand out of the discretionary fund, you could split it between the HUD grant and Cleveland Avenue Business Support. We know that the Cleveland Avenue businesses are going to be negatively impacted next year in the whole construction period. And I think, and I want to applaud the group that's been meeting together that to start making some plans of how to circumvent some of those heartaches and the problems that they're going to receive. We might want to just split that, put it in both funds. And we could always come back and revisit that if we need more support versus the HUD grants.
Okay. Thank you. Any different further direction from what we've heard? Trustee Wigan?
I would say we do not need to increase the hardship grant any. I think keeping it at twenty five thousand, I'd be happy with. Whatever the board comes up with, final decision, no problem though. But I think with what it's done, and I think, you know, last, this summer here was a good projection of what next year is going to be too, I think. We had a fairly dry year, you know, usage been pretty consistent. So, I mean, right now, we're, what are we there? Probably twenty five percent under budget on that particular item.
Roughly.
So I think that would be plenty good at that point to keep it the same.
Thank you.
And as far as Cleveland, are we talking about that one right now? Not yet. Thank you.
Trustee Daly?
HUD grant's so important, and I think it's really important that we support all of our rate pairs through hardships. As we can see for a year to date, we're not even at seventy percent of next year's budgeted amount. So I think the twenty five thousand dollars is absolutely adequate. I have known that in the past, when we needed more, we've made amendments. It's very weather dependent, honestly, whether or not we're going to have spikes in our usage or any of those kind of things. So I suggest that we keep it at twenty five thousand dollars as recommended. And then, of course, as needed, as we've done for years and years, if we need to boost that amount, we should do that as an amendment in the future.
Thank you. Member ten?
I would also support keeping it at the twenty five thousand dollar point.
Thank you. I support keeping it at twenty five thousand dollars. All right, next up?
All right. Just the consensus, the majority there was twenty five thousand.
Yeah.
Okay. Does the board wish to keep or change Cleveland Avenue Business Support expenditure proposed?
Trustee Teetz?
I support keeping it. That's fine.
Thank you. Trustee Cannon?
We don't know what's expected with Cleveland Avenue, and we can always come back and revisit this. If hardship starts doing this, I'd keep it at the twenty five and free up that ten thousand in discretionary fund for other municipal purposes.
Thank you. Member ten?
Yeah, I agree with trustee Cannon on that. Let's leave it at the twenty five thousand. Those businesses are certainly going to need our support during construction, so.
Thank you. Trustee Daly?
Ooh, sneaky, sneaky.
I would suggest that we take the discretionary ten thousand dollars that we took there and put it into the Cleveland Avenue Business Support. The reason being is I recently saw the initiatives, the Main Street program and what they're doing with the money. And I'm not saying that we're designating the program exactly as it is, but I see a lot more opportunity than I thought before, not just for direct. And this is the reason why. So far, we've talked about direct support for the money to go towards businesses or towards organizations on Main Street to help them with the loss of money or loss of, you know, income that they might have. But what Main Streets is doing is making an investment to drive people to downtown. And those are actually, those investments go directly towards consumers. So whether or not it's a buy one, get one free type gift card through YFT program, which is already established, whether or not it's prizes or, you know, programs like a passport program or a bingo card and those kind of things. This is stuff that is actually investments towards consumers. I think is another opportunity that we haven't really dove into. And I think this ten thousand dollars, which happens to be the same amount that Windsor receives the sponsorship for gift cards alone for their downtown programs on a yearly basis, can influence our consumer habits and making sure that they're continuing to go to these businesses. If not, have more encouragement than ever to go to these businesses and create habits and loyalty amongst our residents to support downtown. Not just us saying, here's the money to help you, it's saying, here's the businesses. This is the business and consumers that we're riling up to support you, which I think means more and makes each one of those dollars go a lot further. I would suggest that we use those ten thousand dollars for those efforts to support consumership of our businesses during that time. And not only that, through the program that Main Streets has done, they actually have reporting and they can see where those dollars are spent and the participation in the programs or things that can do. Sometimes it's matching funds. If you buy a gift card, you get a free gift card, that kind of thing. So you can see exactly where those dollars go to. I'm not saying that has to be the program, but there's ways to track it and see exactly the payoff and how much consumer we're increasing. So I would suggest that we not wait, because those are the things you have to do in advance. Those aren't things that you can wait to see if they're suffering and then start giving out gift cards. Those are the things that you do in advance of to ramp up to and encourage people to attend those businesses. We don't want to wait for them to fail. We don't want to wait for them to ask for a handout. We want to encourage people to support them constantly. So I think we should increase it by the ten thousand.
I do have a question because I don't know a lot about the program. Who facilitates that? Is that done by the Main Street program or does YFT do that? How does that work?
And like I said, I don't want to say that we're doing YFT.
But yeah, it's not any program like that.
As an example, yeah, that's actually the, and I don't know the who pays where what money, but it's an investment of the program to say we will provide matching funds for buy one, get one, get one free or buy one, get extra twenty percent of this amount of money. So then YFT would provide those promotions. And then we could then tell people, everybody go get a YFT card or do those kind of things that can be used at all of these businesses. And we make sure we enroll every business that needs to participate in that as well. And it's used just like a credit card and it's easy transactions in this case. So that would be an option, I think. But infusing money into that immediately or as soon as possible, I think is what really needs to happen to make sure that's successful. So not necessarily YFT, but in that kind of concept of supporting consumers, not just the businesses.
I apologize. I have a question because we haven't as a board decided on how that's going to look for that investment. So I'm just confused on have we already made a decision on how that support is going to be applied?
No, no.
God, I was just verifying that. I didn't miss it in a meeting.
Yeah, no, she, it would just gotten mentioned in the presentation earlier this evening about that program. So I think she was referring to that and stating some facts that she knew from being on with that board as a liaison.
I just see more opportunities. That's why I want to make a recommendation that we put more money into it.
Thank you.
And I mean, more broadly, your recommendation would be to put more money into it without knowing what that money would potentially go to, but having it there if we need it.
Exactly, as a plan to use it, yeah.
Thank you.
I don't want to wait for them to ask for help. That's the thing.
Trustee Wigan?
I agree with trustee Daly on this one here. I went through Fort Collins redoing of Drake Street where it killed so many businesses. So we have to be very proactive, I think, out there. You know, if we wait until after the businesses start taking a hit, maybe too late. So if, and I would love to see before we actually start giving out money, seeing a plan, seeing a plan of attack. And as.
I was referring to. I was trying to figure out what they were talking about, and this is what I was referring, the Cleveland Avenue Business Support options.
Perfect. And with that, I would be in favor of doing the extra ten over to that too.
Thank you. I'm with you guys on this one for sure. So we are currently split.
I'm not split. I'll go either way. No, I'm fine.
And I would go the extra ten as well. And that keeps us from having to do a budget amendment.
In the middle of respond quicker.
Correct.
Perfect.
Great, thanks. Lastly, one hundred twenty five thousand dollars has been included in the twenty twenty six budget for Wellington to begin the process of becoming a home rule community. A new professional services expenditure has been included in the administration department. And the expense for elections has been, for potential elections has been included in the town clerk's budget. The professional services expenses include marketing and education, a survey of residents and costs associated with legal and election needs. With the mayor's support, staff requests a straw poll to determine if home rules should be included or changed in the budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty six.
Thank you. And then trustee Cannon, I would imagine this is why it got pulled, so have at it, sir.
This is the reason it got pulled, and I'm going to ask for just a little extra time. You know, you know that I'm a big advocate for home rule. And I, for the past year and a half, you know, I've been talking about the benefits. And I've talked about how becoming a home rule community opens up a world of possibilities for us. You know, as the past half hour, forty five minutes has shown, we don't have enough revenues to pay for all the needs of the community, you know? And that happened again last year as well. You know, our problem is we just don't have enough revenues to provide services to the community. You know, I looked at our strategic plan and, you know, it's got a vision, a mission, guiding principles and strategic directions. You know, I love our vision. I was part of that process to fine tune that. But I'd like to talk about the last two, the mission to provide outstanding municipal services to our community of today and tomorrow. But we're not making any provisions for tomorrow. Our guiding principles, community-centered relationships, fiscal responsibility and accountability. Again, if we are spending without bringing in revenues, we are not fiscally responsible. Strategic directives, grow responsibly. We haven't ever grown responsibly. You know, we depend so much on the building community because since we don't have commercial sales taxes and commercial property taxes to fund up our general fund reserves, we're relying instead on builders coming so we can get their use taxes, so we can get their impact fees. And I mentioned two weeks ago, if there's a slowdown in the market, that's going to negatively impact us. We know, based on our discussions yesterday, there's only thirty eight permits being pulled next year. And we know that for a fact because there's not more than thirty eight site-ready properties. And it may not even clear itself up in twenty twenty seven either. So we've got an unsustainable model for bringing in revenues. And I'd like to remind everybody, when you got elected, you got a pamphlet from the Colorado Municipal League. And if you read that pamphlet, it talked about how municipalities receive the majority of their revenues from sales taxes. So I did a little quick comparison. In Wellington, we generate one point two times more sales taxes than property taxes. In other words, we're just slightly above our property taxes and the sales taxes we do. In Fort Collins, it's three point six times. In Loveland, it's three point four times. Timneth, it's almost eight times. And a lot of those sales taxes are coming from our residents who are shopping at Timneth because we don't have the services here locally for them to shop in. So as we're growing, smart growth and sustainable growth means, okay, we're adding houses. Well, we've also got to expand our services, but we've got to find a way to pay for those services. And the way we pay for those services by generating sales tax. We have never put any emphasis on commercial growth here in our town. And that's why we depend so heavily on the builders to come in and give us use taxes. And we celebrate that incremental increase in use taxes when instead we should be bemoaning the fact that we don't have any sales tax revenues to fund our services. So instead of growing responsibly by focusing on that commercial growth, we've become dependent on those, on new houses to fund our operations. Now, Wellington can generate revenues in a couple of different, and I'm going to put it in two categories. One, we can raise taxes. We can put a property tax question on a ballot, say, we'd like to increase your sales taxes because we're not smart enough to pay for our services. Or we want to raise your property taxes. Well, that's not sustainable either. And first of all, I would never approve that and I would never vote in favor of it. I think we have a problem with trust with our people, and it's all related to the water part, but it questions everything that we do. And if we're not responsible in how we're managing our revenues to provide services, then they have every right to question us of what we're doing. But the other way we can do that is by recruiting commercial businesses and getting more sales tax revenue. Home rule gives us a greater opportunity and flexibility to recruit commercial businesses to the town. Because as a statutory town, statutes don't say, yes, you can do this or you can do that. So we can't do it. But as a home rule, we can write our laws that allows us to do that, gives us that tremendous flexibility. So everybody knows the benefit of home rules, and it's been a board priority for two years. Last year, at the budget discussions, we delayed home rule until twenty twenty six because we had things to fix. We had things to buy. We had repairs to make. I mean, it was, you know, there's just not enough money to do that. And now we're kind of facing the same kind of situation. And I'm really wondering why we're even considering whether to take home rule off the table when it can do, when it's an investment in our future at the end of the day. So again, Ms. Garcia talked about a three hundred something, three hundred thirty three something thousand dollar shortfall in our budget. That's one half of one percent of our reserves. Dip into the reserves and pay for the things we need to do and keep home rule in the budget. And it's also difficult to get seven elected officials to agree on a course of action. Seven years ago, I sat in the back of this room with the board in a work session. I was the town administrator at the time. We talked about home rule. We had work sessions on that. We talked about the benefits and so forth. It never got off the ground, you know? We just didn't have enough trustees that felt that it was a priority. Well, for the past year and a half, we felt that it's been a priority. And we need to keep it there. Because I'm going to remind everybody, and I think trustee Teetz has already said this, we're going to have three or four new people on this board come April. And if we delay this until twenty twenty seven, those three or four people that come in are going to have different priorities, a different learning curve. And we don't know if we'll ever have this opportunity again. Right now, we've got the opportunity. Like I said, it's been a board priority. We agree on it. And I don't want to bemoan all the, and keep going over the same points about the benefits from it, but I did pass out information to all the trustees this past week.
Good.
We need to keep home rule in the budget. And we need to pass an ordinance this year to put a home rule charter commission on the ballot for twenty twenty six. And that ensures that the next board that comes in won't throw a monkey wrench in the whole works and decide that's just a waste of money. But the thing is, it's not a waste of money. If we can't recruit businesses because we have expensive land or expensive water or the infrastructure is not there, home rule can help bridge some of those gaps. So thank you for the opportunity to talk about this.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you, trustee Cannon. The reason why I wanted this brought before us, and I'm going to devil's advocate you here in a couple areas. It's a lot of possibilities can happen, things we can use. There's the flip side to that. It is a charter. They do write the laws. They could make them even more restrictive than they currently are. Usually that doesn't happen, but it's a possibility. Usually that doesn't happen, but it's a possibility, right? When we talk about getting more revenues, really right away, we're looking at like lodging tax and some other things there. We don't really have anything that's going to increase our revenues that great, that fast. So it's not a fix all by any way, shape or form. So when something like this goes into place, it does still take time. So I want to make sure that all of you guys are aware of that. And yeah, um, we are making provisions for tomorrow. We are, you know, making progress forward with economic development, getting people in here and in trying to entice businesses outside of the home rule aspect of things. Um, so I wouldn't say that us as a board have not been proactive in that aspect either. I personally, it's a big what if, if the people leave and voted in, okay? So, um, the way I would go with this, if, just saying my part would be get the public surveys out there, get the knowledge rocking and rolling and we maybe budget for that this coming year. Because for us to do that and then do two special elections this next year, I, we're going to be hard pressed to make any of that happen. And I think we really need to pay attention to educating our public um, to get it a vote passed for us to even go down this route. So that would be the, the compromise I would say we should make. And the reason I'm saying these things is, is the town staff has made a lot of cuts and they've tightened up their belt, right? All of our residents are tightening up their belts because of how things are going out in the economy there, right? It's starting to look better, but hey, things are expensive. People are on a tight leash. Okay? So we as a board should also tighten up. So I think in my opinion, we should compromise on this, but that's my stance. So any comments from the board, trustee Teetz?
I do have a few comments and I want to thank trustee Cannon for sending out the email to us that kind of highlighted some of the additional information on home rule. So I'm going to say it because I sat here and I argued the, the idea of why home rule was a bad idea when we, last year when we were discussing adding it. We had discussed the public trust is down. We discussed a lot of opportunities that we could have missed, should have missed, but then our board did agree to bring this forward this year. And I understand tightening our belts and you, you asked me last year and I was really negative on the idea of home rule, not negative, but just like, we have no public trust right now. And when I look at it now and I look at the additional information shared, I did a lot of research online and I look at, it's not really tightening our belt if we're moving forward with additional possibility for attracting future businesses. When we look at the additional possibility of being able to control some of the lodging tax, we only have one hotel. But what if that actually attracts additional hotels or additional Airbnbs or additional other items? Because lodging tax can be credited to Airbnb's as well. I, I pay it in Florida for mine. But when I look at it, I was somewhat against this last year, but we did as an agreement, vote and decide that we were going to hold off previous year and come back this year. And then I did all of the additional research and I'm excited about some of the possibilities that this can bring for our town. What I do know is, is if we say we're going to do it next year, that's adding another year. So you're looking at 28. When by the time you get things rolling and items like that and I, I, I just, I agree to keep this on this budget. I agree to the idea of having that April election so we can get rolling and can move forward. Because that is the one thing I noticed when I went and looked at a lot of these sales tax revenues for different municipalities. The thing that does stand out is that, that increased sales tax revenue removes our dependency on permitted homes. And when we look at moving towards increasing sales tax revenue and decreasing our dependency on those fees that come from developers and additional contracts. And we still make catches for those developers too, because we're saying, hey, we're going to go ahead and invest in $200,000 worth of public infrastructure. So there's costs there too that we're doing. So what if we transition some of that, hey, let's match your investment, but we did it with sales tax revenue generating income? That might be a different possibility for us that we have yet to actually try. So I'm going to go ahead and I'm going to uphold my agreement to you last year. And I'm going to say I support this moving forward in this budget season this next year because it is something we have not tried. And if we keep going down the path, we're just going to keep going budget deficit. We're going to keep pulling from that fund balance and we have nothing that's helping us recover from that right now.
So just be very clear, you're in favor of moving forward with all of it and none, none of the compromise portion of it.
With how it was presented.
Perfect.
Yes.
Trust me.
I am for the total 125 as is presented here. You know, one thing that our board has been is very forward looking as far as water, as far as a lot of the things that we're doing with the economic development. We have to get some of the power away from the state and put it back into our town. So we have some control. And especially as you've seen over the last few years, the state's out of control on a lot of different things. So if this, and I know it should, really ramp up the economic development part, I mean, it's going to give us more bite into what we can offer people, let alone just having our person come on. I think it's a win-win situation. So I, I would say, you know, we need to get on it. We need to get on it fast. You know, education is a big thing, like you were talking. You know, we don't want to throw away money by no means. So whatever it is, we want to make sure that, you know, we get it out to the people. We let them know what it is, the benefits of it, why we are forward looking on this. You know, this isn't just going to be for 2028 or 2030. I mean, this is for the, the lifetime of Wellington. And it should be a make, it will make our community very strong. So thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Daly.
Uh, the home rule discussion is very much not a, a quick payoff item. There, there's no way we can look at and say, well, this pays off or is it going to be worth it in the immediate future? That's not the case. This is completely a future, future planning kind of item. Obviously we will have a lot of savings if we determine through the survey and the marketing that we should not proceed to go to election. So I think that that will be something we can consider next year, obviously. As an amendment, opposite of what we've been talking about is spending more money. It might be the opposite direction that we'd be considering this based off of not a successful survey or not a recommendation to proceed. So, but in my mind, this is not any near payoff item, but it is a future of the town item. And I think it is very important. So I think we should pursue it and see what the community wants to do and if they are willing and able to consider this. So I would recommend keeping it as is on the budget.
Perfect. Thank you. Member 10.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, well, let's see, I'm, I've got a bunch of things I think to say on this and I, I, I apologize because I have kind of vacillated on this a little bit. I've been rolling this back in, around in my head over the last about two weeks or so, uh, just obviously because we're discussing budget and that sort of thing. A couple of things I'd like to say is first of all, any, anything that I do, I tend to look at in a very strategic manner. And I think it was pointed out to us tonight that, uh, there will be four seats up next year. And one thing that I would be concerned about as far as going, or going down a potential home rule right, route right now and asking voters to approve a charter commission in April would be that, uh, either A, uh, voters don't approve it or, uh, that we get four new members that maybe don't support home rule. And I think that's going to be a very important thing for us going forward because if the board members don't support it and can't sell it to the community, then it won't be sold. So, uh, my proposition would, would be the same as the mayor's, which would be that we, I do believe we should budget for a survey this year and I would like to see that survey come out in 2026. Uh, those new board members will of course be elected in April. And if they want to budget as a whole, as the new board for a, uh, to pursue actually a charter commission vote, then I, then I think that would be, that is, that, I, I think we should probably leave that up to their prerogative. Again, if those board members are not on board, it's not going to be sold to the community. Another thing I'd like to point out is again, as trustee Daly so eloquently pointed out, none of these things are immediate. Even if home rule was to pass and we say, we got a charter, charter commission together and let's say that the charter does pass and let's say that we want a lodging tax, well, that's got to go back to the voters too. So, you know, the, the, the promise of $80,000 in lodging tax, tax revenue is, is in no way guaranteed, considering the number of things that we have to do going down the road here to make all of this stuff happen. So I, I think, I think we need to get a survey in the community's hands, judge where they lie, get the new board members on board. And if they want to pursue that route, then they should, they should budget for that in 2027. And I, I do apologize for going back and forth on that. But again, I think we need to be strategic about this and it's all about timing. It's all about timing. So that's where I'm at.
Thank you, sir.
Just to confirm the direction I've received is four in favor. Um, so the board majority.
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
At this time, I'd be happy to hear any additional direction or questions from the board.
Anything further? Keep it short and sweet if you do. Trustee Daly.
Uh, questions regarding strategic land acquisition and funds that we had maybe reserved for that and removed in subsequent updates. Um, and no answers necessarily right now, but just as a conversation maybe to the board. I think there's properties that exist that are available right now that are, that should be purchased by the town as soon as possible. Uh, I think if we reduce any funding for pursuing that, we are strategically really hurting ourselves. You know, properties only are for sale so often. Um, so if we miss an opportunity to buy something that would be essential, for example, for trail connectivity, you don't really get another option for that, right? You have to go all the way around or a different route or something. But if there's happens to be a property right along the route in which we're trying to create a trail or do public spaces for the town, I think we should be able to move on those quickly. And that's just one example, of course, because Prost lives in the back of my head. But I think there's many other opportunities like that too, um, that we need to not just, we need to actively consider, um, and be very proactive in searching for property that is strategically important for the town. So I would recommend that we add back any funding that we took away from the strategic land acquisition line item.
All in favor?
Right now at this time, I'm not in favor of that. And it's specifically because we, it's not just buying that piece of property. It is the maintenance and everything else that goes along with it. So at this time, while we're discussing, we just had this discussion about cutting funds, doing funds. So no, I am not in support of that at this time.
Trust Cannon.
Keeping a property acquis, strategic property acquisition line item in our budget reduces our revenues in two ways. First of all, we have to make a cash outlay. And the only route lay we have is in our reserves. Secondly, we're taking a property off the tax rolls. So we're, we're, we're taking a double hit on that. You know, this, this whole discussion, and I've brought this up several times is that, is that we are not generating sufficient revenues to do everything we want to do, everything, even what we need to do. So, and I appreciate everyone's comments and I appreciate Kayla, I appreciate you more than you understand. You know, if, if we were not moving into an election this, this next time, I would have said, well, maybe a two-part thing might be doing that. But I also think about if we don't do anything, then we'll never have that opportunity for, for down the road. But no, I'm not in favor of adding money again for prop, property acquisition.
Thank you. Member 10. Yeah, your name.
No, I don't. Do, do we have a num, amount that we borrowed that from that? I, I don't have that in front of me.
Uh, I have to look at the previous versions, but that was on this last meeting when it was brought before the board when I wasn't here. I'm sorry. I didn't bring up that, but it was removed.
I'll be honest with, without the numbers, I, I, I don't want to say yes or no on, on, with, without looking at those numbers. So.
I, I can look those up real quick.
Yes, please do.
Let me see if I can beat you. We, we have talked, we have talked about this a little bit internally. So, um, Mr. Reed David has some updated information. And it is, you know, property acquisition is something that we're always interested in. If, um, a property comes available and brought to us that is strategic, we would definitely bring that opportunity to the Board of Trustees and Executive Session and related to negotiations.
$400,000 was originally presented in the CIP requests and that was delayed, uh, to 2020. So we pushed 26 and 27 to 27 and 28.
That's what I saw. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Understood. I, I, that's a pretty good chunk of change. I personally, I would probably hold on that for now, personally. Um, I did want to ask a clarifying question though. I, I wasn't entirely sure where we ended up as far as the whole home rule thing. Do we?
They're moving forward.
Okay. Okay. The whole, the whole budget. Okay. Sounds good.
Trustee Wigan.
I would be in favor of moving, uh, the acquisition money to the next year.
So as it sits.
Yeah.
Thank you. I would like to leave it as it sits personally. Something I think we could, if the time arises, we can definitely make the decision in the moment. Okay.
I have one more question.
Go for it.
And thank you again for, and this is a long conversation, but you know, we only get one chance to set a policy document and we want to make sure we're doing it right. I talked a couple of times, I brought this up, that, that we can dip into reserves to, to meet a lot of those needs that are, are being bumped and so forth. I don't recommend meeting unsustainable needs like hiring this person because that's a, that's a steady drain, you know, for a long time. But I'd like to know what the board's thoughts are of if, if there's a 300 or $350,000 deficit when we're redoing our numbers, would the board be agreeable to allow using reserves for that?
I think that is an acceptable range to use. That is very insignificant in comparison to the overall budget, as you mentioned, in the reserves. So I think that's an acceptable amount.
Thank you. Trustee Wigan. Okay. Trustee Teetz.
Yeah. Well, because that's as presented. It's a 300,000 is understandable budget deficit. I'm fine with that.
Good, good.
All right. Well, thank you for your time tonight, your engagement and the direction you provided. Uh, staff has a lot of work still left to do and we'll be bringing the complete budget, including the full budget book for presentation, public comment and consideration of adoption on November 18th. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Reed David.
All right, Dan. It's your last update. Do you have anything to report?
I'll be available if you need anything. These guys are great. You'll be in fantastic hands. Uh, hopefully I'll see you all again in Pueblo at the end of November for high school football championships.
Oh, yeah.
I will be there. All right. I'm still a Wellington fan, even though I'm not working for the town myself.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Garcia.
All right. So the interim town attorney has been appointed. Now the board needs to start thinking about the transition plan to select a new town attorney. I sent an email out earlier today, um, with some ideas on how to proceed. Um, if you want to provide me direction at any point in time, if you wanted to wait for a little bit to just kind of settle in and, before we start the RFP process, staff is happy to facilitate and be as engaged as you would like us to be. Um, it is a board appointment. So there is definitely, the board will be involved in, I would recommend minimally, selection of finalists. And then of course you would handle the interview process in an open meeting. But whatever, what, however you all would like us to proceed, I'm happy to set this up to talk about at the December 9th meeting and present some other options, you know, just line out some options for you and you You know, just line out some options for you and you can talk about how you would like to move forward with that process. You do make appointments after, I think it's the first Tuesday after the regular election. Um, so you would be appointing a town attorney at that point in time. It could be the interim attorneys or you could be, you know, be still going through that RFP process and, and selection process at that time. So there's no real timeline that you have to meet. So I don't want to, I don't want to pressure you and saying we need to get RFPs done now and things like that, but just want to let you know that we're available. I'm available to help and support in whatever direction you'd like to go. And if you'd like me to, I can add that to the December 9th agenda.
I, I would like that. Krista Cannon.
I would recommend that staff go ahead and start working on the RFP. Because they could always bring it to us and when they're ready to do that. But you know, this next couple of months is going to roll by pretty quick. And, um, I don't think we've had an RFP process for a town attorney ever.
Ever. Probably not. We, we can't find anything. So there's that. So we could, I'd be happy to do that. And in that RFP, um, would include a timeline for, you know, when, you know, applications are due, when interviews would be set up, appointment dates, things like that. So uh, we can, we can put together a draft RFP, RFP for you all to start taking a look at. I can bring that to the December 9th meeting and you all can provide direction from there. Sound good?
Thank you. Trustee Teets.
No, that's, I'm sorry. I'm speaking into my mic.
Okay, cool. Um, so there's going to be a lot of work related to home rule. Um, Hannah's already worked on a couple of different timelines. Uh, maybe December 9th will be the date that we can bring that to you as well. Um, just our conceptual idea of how this could go with a couple of different options for you. And then I did also send out information about a food drive that we usually just do internally, but we're going to open it up to the public, um, and allow people to bring, um, goods to the town, um, into the municipal services building during our regular working hours. And then we will take it over to the food bank. So we'll be getting flyers out and social, it's already hit social media and things like that. So, if you want to drop anything off, feel free. So thank you.
Thank you. Um, staff reports were in the packet. Uh, any board reports? Trustee Teets.
So I haven't done one of these in a while. Um, so one of my requests at the mayor and I's, uh, mayor meeting, I think it's like six week mayor meeting. It's six of us. So yeah. Um, one of my discussions and talking points was the generalized idea that right now I know that there is families in our community that are impacted by stuff going on at the federal level related to SNAP benefits, um, food stamps and support in that route of things. I did make mention of finding out about information that if we could utilize, since we still have some of our board discretionary fund left over this year, if there was a possibility, um, that we could provide some of those discretionary funds towards the community services center solely for the purchase of additional food for the community as we head into Thanksgiving and Christmas time with no understanding or knowledge of when a funding might come down a pipeline for some families that are in need now. Um, I don't know. Did we have follow-up or anything like that?
Sure. So I did talk to, um, town attorney, Mr. Sapienza before he left us about this and sorry, just, just have to throw that out there. Um, and they, they would more than like, um, the, the, the food bank would more than likely qualify. They would need to submit an application. So that, but Dan will speak.
Yeah. Um, for the grant process, it'd be best if they could submit an application, but because of the timeline on unofficial action anyway, this would have to come before the board at a later meeting. Um, so it'd have to be on the agenda. So that gives us, uh, it gives the town a couple of weeks. So I, so I'd recommend reaching out immediately um, to put something together. I, I think, you know, as you said, or as, um, Ms. Garcia said, the food bank, community service center, these sorts of programs, projects, um, uh, entities would probably fit under a public purpose. We just need to get that application together. I, I think there should be no problem to get that done in time for the next meeting, when, when it would have to be on the agenda anyway. So if that's a request of the board to move forward with that, I think even staff could reach out to those entities to encourage them and help them put that together.
All in favor?
For the board.
Yes. Okay. Perfect.
So do I need to reach out to them or trustee Teets, are you going to be reaching out?
I would ask that you reach out as town staff, since you already communicate with them on a regular basis, if that's okay.
Okay. Awesome. Want to do double duty. Thank you.
And thank you all for the budget items. Nick, you are amazing for putting up with all of our questions on a very regular basis. I am extremely grateful. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any board reports? Trustee Cannon? No. Member 10.
Yeah, I also just want to thank the staff for, uh, putting together a wonderful budget this year. Uh, heck of a job, guys. Really. Holy smokes. Lot, lot of work there. I also want to congratulate the, uh, high school football team, of course. Uh, I don't think Valley is playing next week. Looks like they forfeited the game. So I think that makes us conference champions. Now, and Mr. Sapienza, hopefully, uh, you're not going to end up being a fairwether fan. Go ahead and stick around with us as far as that goes. We'll.
My child was in tears today when he left his Wellington High School hoodie at school on the way home. No, we're, we're Wellington fans in my hat.
Excellent. Excellent. I appreciate that. And I just wanted to say, uh, uh, thank you to, uh, Mr. Scott and Mr. Gold for, uh, uh, being here in the interim. We've got a whole bunch of big projects coming up. I know you guys will be hearing a lot of that from staff as far as, uh, the water stuff that's going on, that sort of thing. So just appreciate you guys, uh, filling an awfully big pair of shoes here and, uh, appreciate the, uh, recommendation as well, Mr. Sapienza. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. Trustee Wigan, any report? Well, trustee Daly.
I have to look up dates because I'm notorious at saying the wrong dates for things when I give updates, but earlier they met, they mentioned the stroll and roll, which Dola's coming and they're doing a walking tour. But just in case it wasn't obvious, there's a roll component of that. So, um, there will be an opportunity if folks want to, borrow a wheelchair during that tour, um, and experience what our downtown is like for somebody in a wheelchair. Uh, the 13th would be the opportunity to do that with Dola for that tour. And then the person kind of hosting that is Kevin, who's one of the advocates who, um, was behind the ADA accessible dock. So it was a, a, a member of the community. It's been really a great advocate. So that's another opportunity, um, of what we mentioned earlier. Just wrapped up was the last, uh, moving the park night for, for Parks and Rec. And I can see it was super successful. It was the 25th. They had cocoa. But I do want to acknowledge that because this was a kind of a new offering that we've done for this full year. And people have really loved it and I've heard such great things. So between pirate movies and Pirate Park, um, you know, and then all the things throughout the summer, uh, they're already ramping up for next year for movies in the park. Um, I'm really excited because I, this is great opportunities that we're doing. And I just want to put a little spotlight on some cool stuff that's going on. The other thing that was mentioned tonight that I want to make sure everybody, person on this board attends, if absolutely possible, is the, uh, Main Street's annual dinner. If you guys can please attend, um, that would be fantastic. It is a taste of Wellington. So there'll be food from so many different restaurants and food trucks and stuff from Wellington at it. It's a great time. It's another opportunity to be in front of Dola, which I think is great. Um, and it's just some of our biggest volunteers in town and celebrating them. So please come out for that on November 20th. On November 21st, is Stuff the Truck Turkey Drive. So part of Food Bank as well, but that's the day where you bring frozen turkeys to all the schools or to the designated locations um, to donate turkeys that are then given away that, that week. So, um, please put that on your calendar. It's, I was mentioning to someone, the site it is at elementary schools, because they pick up in the drop-off line for elementary schools, but it's pretty much every car that goes through drop-off has a small child, because it's elementary school, jump out and try to lug a giant frozen turkey across, across the parking lot to the, not across the parking lot. I don't want to say that. There's no kids running across parking lots. Um, across the sidewalk to the truck where they're loading up the back of the truck with turkeys. And it is maybe the most endearing and cute thing I've ever seen of these small children trying to carry around giant frozen turkeys. But it's a wonderful to see the community and they always get tons of turkeys, um, each year, but only because their support of the community. So please continue in supporting them. And I think it's great that we are looking for other opportunities to support the food bank. Speaking of the food bank and the community services center, I had the privilege and honor, um, to emcee their annual gala, um, Starry Nights Gala. And we raised over $73,000 for that evening, uh, to support the community services center for the new home, the new like, uh, essential home for the food bank for Wellington. So, um, it was such an honor to do wonderful stories shared that night. Um, and just so many people from the community coming together to support that common cause. Uh, it was such an honor to get to do that, um, on behalf of the town, on behalf of the board, on behalf of me personally. So I wanted to thank them for that opportunity and thank the community for supporting it so well. So, thank you.
Thank you.
There's still funds available for matching this year. So if anybody wants to donate, those funds will be matched for the end of the calendar year. So yeah, there's still about $20,000, $20,000 or $30,000 remaining in the matching grant. So every dollar given to CSC is actually $2, $2, um, thanks to that matching grant. So yes, please.
Perfect. Thank you. Um, my board report, well, I had the pleasure of, uh, voting the best Halloween decorations at town hall yesterday, uh, well, in the library itself. Parks and Rec won. So just letting you guys know that. Uh, Nick, you were a close, close, close second. I was very torn. Um, I asked if, if there was like different things I could give awards for, um, and, but that was the ultimate decision. And then Dan, it has been a pleasure. Um, really appreciate everything you've done for the town, all the guidance you've given me. Um, when I have questions, things of that nature as well, uh, more or less your opinions. But, uh, I've really enjoyed working with you, really appreciate you. And, uh, we do have a card here for you. Um, so you can hang this on your fridge and never forget us. So I'm going to give this. All right. Um, having no further business, all in favor to adjourn the meeting, say.
Hi.
Hi. Hi. I will now adjourn the regular meeting time being 8:44 PM.